I hope I don't have one.
Go ahead and start policy committee at six o'clock. So, last week we made it through the policy and we started on the procedures. One thing that I think might be beneficial is this paragraph that we added here, or this statement, I guess. This, I think, should probably be like the first sentence on policy, not in the procedures, because this is the procedure. So, any issues with moving this over to the policy from anyone?
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Yes.
Just minor word changing. On that statement that says, "Or prior to beginning, any a reduction," I would like to recommend that it say, "Prior to scratch beginning, add the word 'taking,' and then add the word 'actions' at the end of the statement." So, it would read, "Emergency must be declared by the board prior to any act, prior to taking any reduction in force actions."
All right, just wanted, this is what is in the...
It's something that's going on with this computer.
All right. Here we go again. All right, so, your... The correction you wanted to add, was it in this paragraph or in the policy?
The one that just disappeared.
Okay, so, perfect.
So, my suggestion would be to strike the word "beginning," add the word "taking," and at the end of the statement, add the word "actions."
Is that what you were requesting?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification. So, there really isn't anything else within this? We were all in agreement at the end of... When we went over this last week. Is there any other corrections or modifications anyone would like on this? Suggestions? And we can come back over to the procedures. So, "The decision to institute relief and the selection of the employee or employees subject to reduction shall be at sole discretion of the board, except for the following limitation. The decision as to which employee or employees shall be subject to such reduction shall be made solely on consideration of employee seniority and contract status." Prior to convincing any action, or prior to convincing action to terminate certified employee contracts under these procedures, the board, let's just strike that out. Will give due consideration to its ability to effectuate position elimination and/or reduction in staff by voluntary retirements, voluntary resignations, transfer of existing staff members to another position for which the individual is appropriately qualified, voluntary leave of absence, leaves of absence. Provided that, however, no transfer shall result in the termination of another employee. Okay. Moving on to the guidelines.
In order to avoid a lot of, there's just suggestions in there that I would make if you incorporate or don't. At least you'd have them in front of you.
Are you, are your suggestions in the red?
Correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, so, the red, the first, oh, well, the first...
The red without the underline is what's already been recommended.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
The red with the underline is what I'm suggesting be changed to recommend it. If that makes sense.
Because we kind of, all right, so...
And in the thing, the instance of the paragraph starts with the decision to, you currently have further down in the document than where I had it.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, the problem with your recommendations to the board of potential actions to be taken shall be made jointly by the district leadership and LEA leadership prior to any formal action being taken, is that they can't recommend to the board. It can only come from the superintendent. So, and I think that's where... Here's, here's, I guess, my suggestion, is I, because these are procedures for how, which it says guidelines, which I guess this is a procedures. Because it's, we are working, supposed to be working hand in hand with the superintendent. I don't think this paragraph is appropriate. And when I say that, what I'm saying is, if this is the path the superintendent's going to choose to make those decisions, that's within the superintendent's discretion. If the superintendent chooses to do it a different way, that's in the superintendent's discretion. I don't feel the benefit of putting this in there and binding the superintendent's hands as to how this plays out, because we are dealing directly with the superintendent when it comes to reduction in force. So, I think that the number two paragraph needs to be removed. And it's, it's not about removing people's voices, because the bottom line is, this is about the superintendent coming to the board saying, "This is what we think needs, or what I think needs to happen." And however she comes to that point, that's at her sole discretion. So, if she wants to delegate the rubric determinations to district leadership and the LEA, that's within her wheelhouse.
But by taking it out, you're saying she has the ability to not do that?
Correct.
And, okay, but, I mean, that's, you don't have to do that statute. So, you would be taking away that power from the teachers to be guaranteed to have a voice in those discussions. You're, by taking that out, you're taking away that voice being guaranteed.
The whole premise of the rubric is not so that anyone's not having a voice. The rubric is pretty specific with how things are, point schedule, point system, et cetera. And I think there was validity in the comment that was made last week, that if you have a non-union teacher and a union teacher with equal scores, which one are you going to choose? And I don't know that the teacher that's not supported by the LEA, because they don't pay union dues, is going to have the same weight as a, a, a union member. I, I, I don't, I mean, that's, that's a natural, normal bias.
But that also, that also happens with the district leadership.
The rubric, is that in here?
I don't know what she thought, I don't know what's in front of you.
Well, I have the packet, but... No, the rubric is all crossed out.
Right.
So, we're still operating from this one?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's, we did like it.
I like that comment as well, and that happens. I think my, my response to that is, it's, it's just, it's for checks and balances to make sure that everything's legit. So, if it did come down to people scored the exact same, and one was an LEA person and one was not, then the right thing to do, I would recuse myself, and that's where the district leadership comes in, and they, they make that decision. It could go, it could go the opposite way. It could be that a principal had a very bad relationship and just butts heads with the teacher, and now it comes down to that teacher and somebody else. That, that principal's going to recommend, or, you know, it could even be the superintendent. And so, for us, you know, and I, I talked to the, you know, the admin team quite a bit about that, but it's just for checks and balances. It's just to make sure that it, there is a fair process across the board.
And I thought we were saying, if we got to a place where two people were scored equally, we'd want a tiebreaker predetermined rubric for a tiebreaker. Like years of seniority or whatever it is, but we definitely would not want to be left up to, yeah, unions, non-unions.
It's on the, it's on the checklist, yeah.
I just think in all fairness to all staff, there should be some sort of...
Because, Michelle, you're right, we wouldn't want to come down to like a membership thing.
No.
It would just be an object, it should be an objective.
But it's, it's more transparent when there is a teacher representative in there. And it makes sense for it to be LEA leadership, since they represent more than 50% of the teachers. There's nothing else, there's no other representation that would say, "I represent more than 50%." And so, all of us that choose to be members are putting our faith and, we believe in this. And we believe that they, the LEA represents us in situations such as this.
And also representing those teachers who aren't in the union.
It's representing teachers, not just members.
Yeah, teachers.
Well, and I said staff, I mean, it's all staff.
Yeah, but it's just being transparent, you're part of the conversation. So, we're not just things that are happening behind closed doors, we have no idea what's going on.
I guess my question is, do, are there other districts that have that in there?
No.
A tiebreaker, or?
Yeah, no, that have, like, as they do their procedures, their reduction in, in their procedures, there's got to be other school districts, I don't know, do they, do they have that in there, like, how does it?
What, this first paragraph? Are you talking about the first paragraph or the rubric?
Well, we're talking about the second, number two.
Number two, yeah, no, that's not in any of the area, surrounding area, school district policies, because that's not a language, that's not language that came from ISBA, which is where I'd say 99% of our policies have originated from. This was language that was created from prior administration in the LEA and got put in this policy in 2021.
But I, I would say good faith efforts is, it's just part of the practice. It's just not documented, and I wasn't around when this one was built, so those of you that participated, but my understanding is part of that was, if we do it, why don't we just say what we do? Is why it got put in there, but I wasn't here when this was discussed, but...
I think, and Michelle, I hear you, I mean, ultimately, the LEA could come, the LEA doesn't make the decision no longer, and there doesn't say the LEA makes the decision.
He's going to be part of the conversation.
Now, I agree with you, I, I think in our current circumstance, our superintendent, you know, would want to do that, and our administration would want to do that, because, but I guess you need to ask your school board, are they comfortable with one person making that sole decision without any other?
Well, Jason, that's not what I said happens. I said that one person comes to the board with the recommendation. How we get to the recommendation is within the hands of that one person.
But you're going to hear, your only hearing is from that.
Absolutely, because that's, that is what the law says. It's not just a, that's who, the only person who wants to talk to you.
No, I agree, I, I agree with that, and I'm not saying that I, or that the LEA should be a part of that. I mean, we don't come to the board, and I'm fine with not coming to the board, I have no problem with that. I just don't want it to be a, where, I mean, something could happen where we get another superintendent, and that superintendent is very vindictive, or that superintendent is very, has ulterior motives, and so you just want some checks and balances in there, that's what, that's what, because, because they would come and recommend a person to be riffed to you, and you guys would try and do checks and balances, but you're only listening to that one person's side of the story, there's no other. And so, in these, in these procedures, it would be, that would give us a voice to try to curb any of that happening. And vice versa, if, I mean, to me, it just, it just makes sense. It makes sense to have checks and balances.
Well, what I, but to me, what the check and balance is, is if you have a rubric that you're following that is supported by evidences, it's tangible. There's no personal vendettas held against people, because the numbers aren't going to be fudged. It's, there is a very consistent...
Well, if that person's surrendering the evaluation of that staff member, then absolutely they can be fudged. Because absolutely, they can be the ones that mark you down. I mean, they're using, if your evaluator is the person, that's also the voice of the riff.
The one that's making the recommendation.
The principal, so...
To the LEA.
I'm not saying it's our admin, but I'm just saying in general, in years past, there have been concerns from teachers about how they are being evaluated, and, and so if this is the evaluation tool that's being used, and it's being used by the person who would like to get rid of that person, then absolutely, there's no conversation being had. Now, granted, we have the ability to refute any negative evaluation you get, but with regards to how quickly any of these things are going to happen, who knows if that due process will take place. And so, I think that that's why, you know, we assume that it has good...
The LEA would be representing that person and to make sure...
Plus, it is a numbers thing. Most likely, the numbers are going to bear out, and the person, the LEA person's just their bearing witness.
How subjective are a lot of those numbers, classroom environment, a lot of those numbers?
Well, I actually, to that point, two comments. Michelle, will you go back to, so I, that's exactly where we were. I actually feel like the way you guys wrote the procedures, you are making it far more subjective, because when you look...
This is a farce, this is quarters.
No, this is quarters, but several of them just have it, like, the IPLP is just one part of it, and that's the most subjective part. The rest of it is pretty like, do you participate, do you have a master's? Like, you can't really fudge that, right? So, the way we currently have it, you're putting a lot of weight on the IPLP, and it, you're giving more points, subjectivity to points. The other piece that we don't have, and several of the other surrounding districts and, and even some in the southern, they have a tiebreaker, so we've seen several of those, but we don't actually have it on ours. We've talked about adding it, so that would be a piece, like, to your point, whatever happens, the way we currently have it, there's more room for subjectivity than, and versus if you just say IPLP, this is the point, you know, whatever, however you guys want to do that, because we literally have it broken down by domain and component, so that's just feedback comparatively to other people. They have it way more objective. It's, did you, do you have volunteers, do you coach, do you have a master's degree, do you do lead, like, that kind of stuff.
I do think we talked about that last time, it's just simplifying and then adding in.
Yeah, and again, I wasn't here when you guys built that, so I'm sure there was a really logical reason as to why, but we need to just look at it from that piece. I think we should write it through the lens of you're taking out some of that subjectivity, I mean, so that it is really...
I still, even if we change the, the rubric, which, you know, I, it's part of the conversation, I still think that we need the language to stay the same on, which is number two up there now, but I don't know what number it will become, about the discussions between the superintendent and LEA, that, again, it's transparency. If I know that Jason or whomever is sitting in that room, that it's being openly discussed and transparent, and the numbers, they're having somebody go, "Yep, those are the numbers, yep, it's a check and ballots," like Jason's saying, and this is why it's required to have witnesses at legal events. This is people's livelihood.
Jointly, except jointly determined, jointly reviewed by district leadership.
Jointly reviewed. And then you can even write in there that, I mean, maybe we need to even put in there the superintendent from, you know, from those discussions.
Making that more clear.
Yes, that would be fun. I would, I would, if I was the superintendent, I'd want somebody else in there with me, yeah. Yeah, I think, no matter who you are.
I wouldn't do this by myself.
Yeah, like, even I don't like the outcome, but was it fair?
Yeah.
I also think it's protection, it's protection for the superintendent, it's protection for, because then, yeah, everybody can then say, "We had a team of people that looked these over and discussed it."
Well, I also think that's why, like, Linda, the way they, the way we do this is because we are such a family, of all of us, and everything, that's why we're so close, and that's why we do everything the way we do it, and that's why we're such a good school district, is because we have our, we have each other's back, and we have, you know, we're in it, doing it together, essentially, just to build trust.
So, in stating, "All the forms will be jointly reviewed by the district leadership team and the LEA leadership team." To me, that is more pertinent than discussions, because discussions are...
Just being part of it, that's really important.
And I understand that.
So, I guess my question is, so, we have, I mean, we have somebody that's going to be from LEA, that's actually going to be looking at everybody's evaluations?
Well, I don't think...
Yeah, we do that anyway.
It'll be looking at the form.
We do, we do that anyway, if, because you have to let those people know that they're now in a category to be riffed, and so then, you, I mean, you can even get permission from those people, but we, every, every employee that I talk with, I...
Well, I don't think that they would out the gate be looking at everyone's evaluation. I think they're going to look at a form that we have.
That would probably be the numbers, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the evaluation itself, it would be this score right here, it would be...
And then, I would think that if the employee wants to challenge that score, that would be a conversation with you to make sure that, you know, are these numbers accurate? As opposed to...
And they would bring their own evidence, which they have either evaluation, yeah.
Right, so that there is a protection for that employee, that whatever their evaluation was, is between you and them, and that stays sacred. And then, I mean, if an employee wants to run around with their evaluation and show everybody, that's on that employee, it's not on you.
Right.
So, but if they have a form that we, where there's just scores, because that's what's going to be provided to the board, and the decisions are made based on the total scores. So, to, to... Well, and that's why it's saying, "Forms will be reviewed," not evidences to support what's on the forms, it's just the forms.
So, and this is going to be done after, because this would be done on everybody, correct? These would be just done on employees that you were considering?
It'll be like in our, in step five, you're going to place categories twos, threes, and everybody else, so then those people would get pulled and scored.
This was the lawyer's explanation of how it's supposed to shoot down, so...
I just have a process question. Within the process, would the employee know what their score was, so they could make sure they agree that it's accurate, or they need to discuss that?
Well, let's look at this, because I think we need to revise our steps, because we took sort of the steps and moved them up. So, there's no...
Yeah.
But, so...
It says, it has dates on there, but it's first Monday, 24th.
Okay, so, after the declaration of a financial emergency, you have to meet with a local union you could faith to see if you can resolve the budget shortfall. If you are, so, out the gate, if the board declares a financial emergency, then the board is meeting with the LEA to determine if we can resolve the budget shortfall.
Is there a solution?
Yeah.
If we're unable to reach an agreement, the board can impose a final step offer after holding a due process hearing for all affected parties. So, that's not crystal clear as to when we notify the affected parties. So, first step is to have HR request voluntary retire, retirements, reassignments, transfers, voluntary leaves. Okay. Declaration of a financial emergency by the board. Okay, so, you are requesting voluntary things before we declare the financial emergency in these steps. All right. I don't know that, I think the board is just trying to look at the budget and see where can we make solutions before we go to HR and say, "Let us know what this is going to fall out to be."
What you're thinking of is just what we have in the negotiated agreement. I sent out an email just, because we have that language in there.
Oh, yeah, for the bonus of $100.
And I send it out at the same time every year.
Okay, okay, yeah, because they need to let you know by March or January.
January 31st.
Okay, so, yeah, so that's an annual thing that Brooke does, and it has nothing to do with the rub. So, declaration of a financial emergency, it probably needs to occur no later than March to allow enough time for the notice appeal, the hearing, and new contracts to be issued. You also want to give people plenty of time to make their decision. For example, if you wanted to have the board's decision by April 10th, the hearing would occur no later than June 16th. Okay. This is such a mess.
What is all, who is all the U's that you're talking about?
This is language that came from the attorney that said, "This is the process, really, how it needs to flow, because our, our procedures didn't flow this way at all."
Michelle said she was going to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
As, as I read through that document, those seem like the attorney's, what, how's it listed in there? The reckoning, the talking points, as opposed to suggested language for the procedure. Which, which, just for reference, if you'd like, what I put in there...
Okay, your red letter.
My red letter in there eliminates that dialogue and puts into what I think could be probable language in there.
Perfect. So, meet and confer with union to try and resolve potential shortfall, so she's got that down here, she has it up here. That's really confusing. Rank evaluating group employees based on the scoring outline in the procedure and types of riff that can occur, grade level, subject matter, category programs. HR sends letter to all potentially impacted employees. Okay, so that is where everyone finds out, is when they receive notice from HR.
Is there a timeframe on that? I wonder particularly because a lot of jobs will post in like March, and if you want to retain highly qualified staff, the sooner that you can let these notices be published, the sooner the better, basically.
Okay, well, here's, here's another, I guess, dilemma, because I'm advocating that we're not walking down this path whatsoever, firmly advocating for that. We can't run a second levy that everybody wants us to run until May.
I understand.
So, why, my frustration is, I want to know down to the pennies long before we have to con, to contemplate this, on top of the fact that we won't know until after May if we even need to enact this. So, it is challenging, everybody wants to know, wants to know, wants to know, but I don't want everyone to be in a state of panic unnecessarily.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah.
It's just unfortunate, but there's just no way.
I think there's a big difference there, and, you know, I said, yeah, what Michelle's saying is completely correct.
As a young teacher, where I could potentially be riffed, it would be advantageous to me to take another position that would be guaranteed. I totally understand where you're coming from, I wanted to wait until May, but I just wanted to express that particular concern of mine, just even...
And I understand that, the unfortunate thing is, is we can't run the levy until May. We, that, our hands are tied. We, our hands are tied on that, I mean, we, we can't go to the county and say, let's hold a special election.
I think it's...
It's not allowed.
But we're gonna know, we're gonna run a levy way before May.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what this, that's...
Absolutely.
I know what Michelle's point is, though, so even, let's just say at the next board meeting, they say, this is what we're doing and blah, 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 right? The issue is, is, okay, so, that's the first hurdle, I think, that people are wanting to, but then the next hurdles, we actually have to pass it, so...
Yeah.
You know, ideally, we would have a situation, when you look at category ones and resignations and all of that, like, maybe we would never have to do this, but we won't know if it passed until May, so to really say, I think that they would feel like it's premature to give, you know, a person a letter.
Sure.
And we're running a levy and we have, and then go, oh, so, so sorry, it passed, right, come back.
It will ease...
That's the piece, that's the hard part.
It will ease everybody's minds if, once we know, I mean, and, and that's what the board's working so diligently on. If you were in the last board meeting, um, they were, you know, it was brought up to postpone until January before we even do the workshop and the board vote, no, we have got to do this, and so they're trying to get those ducks in a row so that they can make a decision. And I would sub, suspect that that decision would be made in January or February. And I would know that if I was in your position, knowing that they're gonna run a levy for nine point five million.
Yeah, really.
Or any kind, or any kind of a levy that I would feel much better. Now, if, if, if the board decides in January and they're like, nope, we are not, we think that we need to cut money, then I think, and maybe they rerun the levy for, you know, I don't know, there's all different scenarios. But I think rerunning the levy would sat, would satisfy a lot of those people, because depending on the amount, obviously, but... Because, because then you'll know, and you, and we'll know more even in the workshop, because everyone's been working really hard to show numbers, and we're gonna know more numbers in the workshop next week.
Yeah, and I'm really hoping that we provide the board with enough information. Again, everything's gonna be approximate, because in, in all fairness, like, there are some concrete, but some of them, it's the, it's the chess play of like, if you do this, then it's this, and it's this, and so some of those will be approximate, but I'm hoping that they have a pitch, enough of a picture where they feel like, okay, we can make some decisions, um, to, just so that people feel like there's, they know what we're doing. So, that if it, if either on next Wednesday or in January, they feel like they have what they need to start, you know, making some next step discussion.
I understand where you're coming from, for not wanting to like frighten away highly qualified staff, especially if the levy passes. And where I'm curious, is I remember Cortlande failed their levy, they had advance notice for teachers that could potentially be riffed, am I correct?
Yes.
Well, and that's what we're doing right here, so if you go down to five, that's, that's what it is, so if, if we do go to a riff, this is where we'll start.
But we won't know when the riff goes into play.
But, yeah.
That's the tricky part. Where what she's saying is in Cortlande, they had, long before the levy was passed.
Pass the levy.
Like, people were literally handed some projections.
If we don't pass the levy, you are on the list of people.
Yes.
So they need to look.
That's what I'm saying, though, is that they...
If I'm not mistaken, though, they, they had run it earlier calendar-wise, so they knew the answers earlier than Lakeland is currently in place.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly, so, so it was different. The unfortunate reality is, best case scenario, there's going to be a, a level of uncertainty for quite a long time.
Yeah.
Worst case scenario, not as much uncertainty, but a lot of bad decisions have to be, uh, difficult decisions have to be made.
Well, I believe that, you know, we will, based on what you said, because whatever we choose to run a second levy for, or a, a, the supplemental levy for, if that's where we're headed, um, we're gonna have to know what the budget is without that money and what that means. And then if we run it, this is what will be able to come back, so to speak. So, yeah, it would be feasible to notify everyone in the sense of, hey, we're gonna choose to go for this much money if it chooses, you know, if the taxpayers elect to have it pass, welcome back, if the taxpayers say, nope, well, you know, we will have to do something. The budget is what it's at and all that, so, I mean, based on...
If you have any best knowledge of that, would you want to go along with that?
Yeah.
I hear you, um, okay, so, let's... These are, um, so that's the other two, three, okay, um...
We talked about putting a checklist as a form, right?
Yes, we're gonna take this out and we will have a form.
Just to clean it up.
Well, yeah, here is, um, yeah, the layout is much smoother.
Yeah.
And then, um, this is ISBAs from Cortlande School District. So, I mean, it's, it's, again, documentation, points allowed, total points awarded, where this one is out there. Point value, data source, total points, so, I mean...
We're just talking about putting it up in its own separate form.
Yeah.
The one that we have, and then if we wanna tweak some of it, but it's just in a form.
And so that way, I mean, everyone can just look at the form and go, okay, this is what it is.
They could even do their own calculations, really.
Based on, yeah, yes, they hope the points they're getting, point values. Um, okay, so, on these steps, declaration of a financial emergency by the board. We have after...
Yeah, so I think he's sifting through her discussion. Is that what you're, you're sifting through, you're sit, on the, on this, you're sifting through kinda like her, like what her opinion or discussion is compared to the actual steps and the fact?
Yeah, exactly, so I eliminated the discussion piece and just put, the, the major thing in the steps category is flipping number one and two, because it seems to me you'd wanna declare the emergency before you request voluntary retirements.
Right. All right, so, and I think that this, based on its language, would probably need to be at the bottom, not at the top. It remains on there, but, I mean, we're just starting out with that, that doesn't flow into the step, the action steps.
Okay, I agree.
So, let me just take off the highlighter. So then if we come over here... I don't know if it's gonna let me do it even in its own part. Oh, it did, look at that.
Yay! It's a miracle.
It's been Christmas now.
So after the declaration of a financial emergency, um...
You.
You.
You. All right, uh... I, it's not, it's the board, or, shall we, the...
So we call it... Though shortfall could be resolved.
I'm just wondering if it's with the leadership or if it's with the president.
I was just gonna ask you, so, and is the whole, is it the whole board, is it the negotiating team with board members present? Is it, I mean, how does that...
Well, statute is, we still don't abide by statute, because the negotiation is supposed to be between the board and the LEA, okay?
Yeah.
We do it differently, that we have teams that meet and then we bring the final thing to the board.
Yeah.
Um, so, but the law's pretty clear that it's supposed to be between the board and the LEA, um, but I, I... Because I think it's just the LEA, and whether that's you or the whole team, or the people that you want to send within the negotiation, then I think that's, um, that should be your, that should be the LEA decision.
Yeah, I agree.
So do you see this as like it's a workshop model, or...
That's, I guess that's kinda what I'm wondering, is it like a full, you know, full...
Bringing back your IBB team?
Yeah.
I don't know.
You know, is it that, is it like that format, or is it...
I feel like the only way it could be, it would have to be a workshop so that it's a give and take, otherwise...
If you have all five board members there, it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be some sort of...
It would have to be a workshop.
Right, I would think so.
Yeah.
And that's fine.
The LEA in good faith.
We move in good faith that after shall be, shall be comma, in good faith, comma, with the LEA.
Yeah, just like spot wire.
Because yous are gonna be hot.
I like to teach elementary, it's fine. Very clear.
They should throw a couple more commas. There seems like a pause.
It's funny, because then I explain to students that possessive S's don't exist, so there's no apostrophe S's. They automatically assume commas as a student, I'm like, no, you've been in space and choosing commas, you just don't have apostrophe S's. They're not the same marking. The connections, they don't, they look the same, they must be... Can't be, may, comma, and then the board can impose a final set offer.
Space after the LEA to...
A space, um, out of the LEA to resolve... To resolve the budget shortfall. Okay, if an agreement cannot be made, the board, um... shall provide the final offer. After holding a due process hearing for all affected parties. Okay. Okay, I think this should be, um...
Do you want the big after it?
No, I don't, but I think this is...
We were wondering about that.
Yeah. Like what you tell your kids.
I mean it.
I have a curious question that is relevant, but aside.
Go ahead.
Is there somewhere in policy that identifies LEA as Lakeland, or is it local? We keep calling it the LEA. Is there somewhere in policy that defines LEA?
I believe LEA stands for Lakeland Educational Association.
I wouldn't believe so, but it could also be local.
What you're saying is typical education publishers will sell LEA and they're talking about local unions, yeah.
There we go, so that we know.
Just one of those.
I don't like acronyms, but I get it, um...
To split hairs back here, I believe the dramatic correction is to have Lakeland Education Association first and an LEA in the parentheses and every time that I use LEA.
Yes, I'm aware of that, thank you.
Pauline's speech is over there.
We apologize.
So the board shall hold a due process hearing for all affected parties if an agreement...
OCD, that's okay.
And, okay, we'll go here.
Yes, I just wanna add in there, we did take this out, so at some point we wanna put in there about HR looking for voluntary resignations. Just, we took it out, so...
It's, it's...
So we put it at the very bottom?
Yeah, it's the first one, that's not here, but we will, um...
Because that looks like a general letter that goes, or an email that goes out, because, I mean, can she really go up to someone and say, hey, would you like to...
You'd really wanna volunteer to retire.
Because, see, I even suggested, because we, we do have people in the district that are fully vested, uh, they could retire right now, get their full, and so I, I said, would it be possible to go to those people and say, if we have to riff, would you be willing in? But I think that's illegal.
Well, the thing is, is if it's in, in a policy and a procedure in this situation, I can legally just send out a general email requesting that.
I think that needs to be up here in the top portion, not as part of the procedure. Um, because the way the lawyer has it is that you're first asking for voluntary, and then we declare a financial emergency.
With the idea of you have enough people, then maybe you don't have to declare.
Right, exactly, that makes sense to me.
So...
But no, I cannot go up to somebody and say, hey, you know what, you've been here for a long time.
Stand!
You're just gonna stop people on the doorstep.
You're like, I think it's time.
I'm just like old, like, I've only been here ten years, give me a five.
Brooke, if you go out in buildings and start missing people, they're gonna freak out.
I know, I just, I don't, we want to...
You're gonna wear grimy outfit, too.
Okay, um, I have no... Okay, so he has lit the one... Can you look at statute, to the shirt, that be sharp? It's for the declaration. It is, but... Thirty-three, uh, twenty-two, two, no, that's the declaration, so thirty-three, five, twenty-two, two. Rank evaluating group employees based on scoring outline.
No, I think it just, it does it on, it does it in the steps as far as... It doesn't say anything about HR.
Well, we have a long day tomorrow, too.
I think that's... Does she have another actual scoring system there?
Yeah. Because this, so, we... Because it appears... So this report is for somebody, I'm gonna burn it with...
I think that everything after Idaho code on line seven is commentary.
Okay, well, this rank evaluating group employees you have up here after... Well, this rank evaluating group employees you have up here after that is before the due process hearings. No?
So just for transparency, HR is not listed at all in the statute or whatever.
Okay.
So that's just, I think it's common sense approach, but it's not.
What does it state?
It just goes right into financial emergency. Prior declaring, find the board of trustees, shall hold this public meeting for the purpose of receiving input to certain possible conclusions. And then it goes into why you can do it. And then it goes into steps. So nothing about, I mean, the statutes like that big.
So I have a question about when number three flows into number four, so I'm just picturing, okay, both parties came together, tried to resolve it, and then number three, an agreement cannot be made, so the board shall hold a due process. Isn't, should the final offer be made before the process?
I think she's still wordsmithing that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
She's just looking up the statute to say the piece about HR and then what the statute says specific to the process.
As long as she behaves, dude, then she can't overdo it. Oh yeah, that's the biggest thing. I know, my guy, my guy seems like, eh, he'll be back. And positive applications. I told my students, I'm not doing all due, because Joc will be around too much. You know, this is important. States upon the declaration of financial emergency, the board shall have the power to reopen the salary and benefits compensation aspect of the negotiated agreement. Including the length of the certified employee contracts, any amount of compensation and benefits, and if the parties to the negotiated agreement mutually agree, reopen other matters contained within the negotiated agreement directly affecting the financial circumstances in the district.
That's things like the private time, what duty creates.
Exercises of fight in this subsection consistent with the requirements. Subsection two of this section, both the board of trustees and the LEA shall meet and confer in good faith for the purpose of reaching an agreement on such issues. See?
Do you want me to copy and paste some of this and just put it in?
I do.
The whole thing?
No, right, sorry. I think it's two, but I'm not copying.
Michelle, back in at number two, where you're referring to the shortfall and reach a new agreement. What new agreement is being referred to there?
It's the new, we would renegotiate, but according to statute, I think we need to specify what we're first renegotiating on is the salaries and benefits. And then we would negotiate on other components of the agreement if need be. Now, this is.
I would think it should be.
Say, it should state that.
Negotiation agreement.
Right.
Because that's too vague.
Or do you want me to put this just under? At the very bottom or?
Put it up here at the top, very easy here. No, above that, in my good space.
Oh yeah.
Thank you.
Now it's looking more like statute.
Tell me wordsmith it, because we don't want it to sound much.
No, that's good.
Alright, so if the state department, okay, certifies that one, okay, so, yeah. Property tax, yep. Which definitely means we qualify. That I think only needs to be part of the policy, but.
Michelle, then is the, is the step then, financial emergency is declared, then you enter to talk to the LEA to renegotiate rather than establish riff? They start the process, is that, is that what that is saying?
When we declare a financial emergency, we have the power to reopen the salary and benefits aspect of the negotiated agreement. But that has to come from the declaration of the financial emergency. It starts everything. And so then we try to renegotiate the negotiated agreement for salaries and benefits.
In lieu of establishing riff?
Right.
For salaries and benefits?
Right, and then.
Because that's, that's not clear.
I understand that, that's why when I was reading through what, because I asked Lynn about the HR thingy and then reading this, it's like, we need to make this very clear, the steps that we have to take. Because they're not. We should agree. So then, if we. Okay, if the parties of the negotiated agreement mutually agree, reopen other matters contained within the negotiated directly affecting the financial circumstances of the school district. So that would be everything that the school district has to pay based on what's within, yeah. And then if the board exercises the power provided. So if we do, if we go through that process, then the board and the LEA meet and confer in good faith for the purpose of reaching a new agreement. So we need to state that we need to try and work on salaries and benefits and then anything else financial within the agreement, which is what leads to the new agreement.
Right, which is also a huge time.
Yes and no.
I don't think, I don't think.
It has potential to be that, that's going to be.
If we, I mean, the way I see it is we're actually looking at next school year. It's not for this current school year. So if we declare a financial emergency, then the reality is, we have to look right now at salaries and benefits and say, I mean, what are our options? Do we freeze them? Do we knock everyone down a peg? Do we, you know, what are we going to do to compensate for the shortfall? And then we would, that would, I think, lead into, I guess, the IVB negotiations. Because then we also have to look at, okay, now we have all the extra stipends for the extra work people do and all of that other stuff, what are we doing there to lower, lower, lower? And then if, and if we don't declare the financial emergency, we still have to have the negotiations to determine what's going to be in the new agreement. So, I mean, there are options, and I hear what you're saying.
I'm just saying, obviously, it would be here in the title.
You're right, it is.
The key word there that I keep getting hung on is reopen.
Because typically.
Because we wouldn't be changing anything for this year.
Right.
So I would like clarification from a lawyer, just to see, because is this, because I do know some school districts, they ran out of money.
Right.
And they have to, they have to riff in the middle of the school year.
Right.
And so is that what this is talking about?
Because when Mary was talking about what I had is, I mean, technically, you're, because it's for next school year, well, wouldn't we just, like, you could declare financial, but then it would be your planning that budget.
The financial emergency would be for next school year, so there would be no, am I reading that right, that there would be no need to reopen at that point? You would just enter, once we figure out what we're doing, then you would just enter.
The other piece is remember, a financial emergency could be, I mean, it could be there was some catastrophic event or it wasn't necessarily because of a levy situation. There could be situations within a school year that you need to do something. That's how I got. For us, I feel like we would just go our normal path in the sense of opening up to IVB when it's time to start opening up, maybe a little bit sooner, just so that we're getting ahead of it, but it wouldn't be for really, it's planning a budget for next year with the money we know is coming.
Well, but if a financial emergency is declared, then, I mean, that is the caveat for the financial status. I mean, if we, if we declare it, we would then begin talking about the fact that, you know, we can't do raises.
Yeah.
And can, where people are at on the current ladder, if we freeze everything, is that still going to help us survive?
Right.
And if we choose that, to me, in any type of negotiations, if you're taking something out, we should put a caveat in as to when that comes back. Because you should not leave people hanging. So, that's where it gets.
And I'm pretty sure Lisa said, Michelle, I feel like she said this to you, so maybe I could have been mixing this, but the moment you do a financial emergency, there's a timing, right?
Yes, that's what the attorney is.
Sixty-five days or something, or sixty days or something.
Yeah.
Well, that was the language that the attorney was trying to say, you know, if you do this by this date, you have to do this by that.
Right, because you're kind of locked in Mary's point.
I think by statute, I think by statute, we could reopen those negotiations, but the discussions would be for this school year unless the board decides we're going to start letting people go now to save money and then we would have to.
Well, that doesn't benefit anything, other than the fact that we can't claim, we can't claim a financial emergency right now.
Because we're fine.
We are, our budget has been set by the monies that we're receiving for this this school year, so.
We're talking about twenty-five pieces.
Right.
And earlier in this statute, it refers to the fact that if certain conditions are met.
Correct.
Then that reopen word would come into play.
Correct.
But you're just talking about next year's negotiation.
Correct.
We would just have to, normally we do it at the end of the year, and if we declared a financial, it would have, emergency would have to come sooner because we would be on a timeline.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but it would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
School.
School year.
In, in this situation, however, the statute has to cover every situation.
Exactly.
Correct, correct. And I don't know that the statute addresses a failed levy, let's just be clear.
It would have to meet, you know, is the fund balance hit a certain point? Did the revenue hit a certain point?
Which, the reality is.
Which is all next year, so it doesn't apply to this year.
It does not apply to this year whatsoever. It will apply to next year, and the reality is with the loss of the levy, we do qualify for this.
No question, if that's.
Yeah.
Is financial emergency defined somewhere, like just?
Yes, it's, I, I, here, let me come back. There we go. So if the state department certifies that one or more of the conditions in paragraph A, B, or C of this subsection are met, then the board of trustees may declare a financial emergency. What those are, are any of the base salary multipliers are reduced by one and one-half percent or more from the prior fiscal year. The minimum instructional salary provisions is reduced by one and one-half percent or more from the prior fiscal year. Or the amount of the total general fund appropriated per support units is reduced by greater than three percent from the original general fund appropriation per support units for any, for any prior fiscal year. Or the amount of property tax revenue to be collected by the school district that may be used for any general fund purpose, with the exception of any emergency levy funds, is reduced from the prior fiscal year. And the amount of said reduction represents more than one and one-half percent. So, I mean, the reality is even if we go after a smaller portion, it could still qualify us under category B to be in a financial emergency. So, we have all sorts of fun. There we go. Alright. So let's take this. It needs to come under here. Let me just see if we can clean this up, so that at least maybe if we can get through this, it would be nice to have the form done.
Do you want me to grab it and start making it?
Yeah, why don't you do that? Because we don't have that, so. I think there's some also, there's some, if you're using all the language from the form, there were some questions about some of the language in the form.
So are you guys okay? I'm just going to make the form and then some of the, like, tie qualifiers, I'm just going to put some samples on and then we can look at it. Is that, are you guys good with that?
Yep.
Is there an extra and in number one there or?
Maybe. Where are we looking at?
Employee contract.
Oh, and, and, okay. Where did you want the comma? You change it number two at some point, right? Yep, sometime. We might get to it. So Mary, is there, where, do I need to put the comma?
Um, you took that other and out.
Okay. Alright, so if the parties to the negotiated agreement mutually agree, other matters contained within the negotiated agreement directly affecting the financial circumstances in the district.
May be discussed or may be negotiated.
Okay. The board of trustees exercises the power provided in this section of the requirements, oh, okay. Okay, so then. Here where we hit that. If after the declaration of a financial emergency, we're simply to this, whatever both parties have met and confer in good faith, and agreement is not reached, it's last best offer following the outcome of the due process hearing. So, here we wrote that, over here. I wish you were big. If after the declaration of a financial emergency, we're simply to this, whatever both parties have met and confer in good faith, and agreement is not reached, it's last best offer following the outcome of the due process hearing. So, here we wrote that, over here. So that is the order. An agreement. So, that's what it's saying, so we'll hold due process hearings and then present the final offer. May impose its last best offer following the outcome of due process hearings. Okay? That can go away. Declared, this section shall be affected only for one fiscal year at a time and shall not be declared by the board of trustees for a second consecutive year unless it qualifies how additional reductions pursuant to the conditions in this district. Okay, I think that is important to this.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's in the procedures, but we're going to serve it in on that, so a financial emergency declared. Effective for only one fiscal year at a time and shall not be declared by the board for a second consecutive. for a second consecutive year unless. Qualified by additional reduction. Right. Unless qualified by additional reductions. Okay? So, not apply any event of financial emergency as to apply pursuant to the decision. Okay, that's irrelevant, all right. It's not irrelevant, you think?
Right, yeah, there's an.
Okay, so, this, it's already stated, then. This is, is that part of the policy? I put it away.
Yeah, I think it's listed in one of the four.
Okay, so this is here. To the following examples or from other conditions necessary, okay, so this is there, this. Where was I? There we go. Okay, so, um... Um, dang it. I think, um... Maybe. This. Should go here, based on the rank evaluation, and we need to state that that's how the board is coming to its final offer, is based on, you know.
The rank.
What is that called? Uh, no, this is.
Reduction in force form?
Okay, thank you.
Does that, the rest of that even need to be entered?
I don't think so. I think it should be forms, because I think they'll be on that. Okay. Or we could say based on, um, the scoring submitted on.
On that.
Yeah.
For, yeah.
Scoring.
Yeah. Yeah.
Based on the scoring provided by submission of policy.
What does the, um, reduction in force form have to do with, um, with the negotiated agreement and salaries and, I mean, because I thought, I think, I feel like we're talking about two different things, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
One being, we're doing a, a rip, the needs of the people, or programs, or whatever we're gonna rip, and then the LEA and the negotiated agreement.
Well, what the district agrees to expense out for wages, salaries, and benefits is, um, determined by what's in the negotiated agreement. So, what's in the negotiated agreement determines what we pay, or where we're gonna place people, how we're gonna pay them for specials, and all the other segments, et cetera, that they're afforded. So. We have to declare a financial emergency, which would then be the conduit for a reduction in force, which will be based on the finances. So, we're going to have to reduce the outpour of the money somewhere, and it's from the negotiated agreement. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes and no, I get that.
Yes, but I just.
I hear it as I'm saying.
Yeah, it's all, it's like there's two separate things going on at the same time.
I feel like the negotiations.
Yeah.
Will help hopefully reduce the effects of rip.
Right.
Because.
A reduction in force, right.
It's spread throughout the contract, the negotiated contract, and therefore, hopefully, if the expense would not be, or the difference in monies would not be so great that there would not be as many rips or any rip at all.
Right, right.
But why does the, the rank evaluation go into, you see what I mean? Why does the rank in the, that, the form, why does this form in the nego, the negotiated agreement?
Well, if we are just saying, okay, we're cutting nine point five two million.
Yeah.
Out of the salaries, wages, and benefits that's in the negotiated agreement, who does that impact? We don't know. We're just giving a dollar amount. So, if we go back to the table and we're like, okay, so, we're gonna have to freeze the salary matrix, and everyone's gonna have to stay in their position, or we say everyone's gonna have to take a step down, well, that's a financial status, and no, it wouldn't occur to that, but if we can't come to that decision, then we need to see who would we be cutting, and what, who would we be reducing in force? Hate that we're cutting. And then, as a board, we have to look at that and see how is that gonna benefit us as opposed to freezing the salary matrix? Or saying, you know, everyone, we'll keep everyone, but everyone needs to take a step back. And then, if we don't have that information, how are we gonna know? So.
What other things we need to cut? So, very first thing we ever look at is salaries, and what we can cut for teachers and our benefits before we cut anything else.
No.
No, no, no.
And that's the work they're doing now. The work they're doing now is, hey, what can we cut so we don't even have to get to this?
Exactly.
So, the problem, the problem is, is.
But this is when you get to the rip. This is when we get to the rip.
So, the salaries and, salaries and benefits make up eighty-seven percent of our whole entire budget, and so that's where, in order for us to even do a rip, we have to first declare a financial emergency, that's, yeah, that's just.
It's about reform, but I understand, Alex.
I guess the question to it, though, is, is that, I mean, it just seems like this is just applying to basically teachers, and what about, so this is.
It's anybody with an administrative degree less than superintendent.
Yeah.
So.
But when you get in, when you, you get into classified staff, um, it's, that's a little bit different, too, uh, because they're not contracted, and so they're at will, and so, I mean, we can reduce, you know, to look at our classified numbers and reduce those.
And those ideas could also be brought up in those negotiations, because it is solid.
That's what I mean.
Right.
So, it's not being. But in answer to, where I think you're like, huh, this is specific to certified staff members, people that are contracted, and how we can negotiate.
It doesn't have to do with anything else, like the cutting, like the, the list that we're making for the nine point whatever.
Right.
And that, and this is a completely separate.
Correct.
So, suddenly.
Correct.
Because we're not gonna get to the nine point five by not cutting teachers. There's no way.
Yeah.
Well, we can work on the meat of it, and all.
However.
I mean, the, the levy was put to, um, our taxpayers.
Correct.
That it was for, it was covered these things. Um, within that, the bulk of it was not, so forth, that it was staffing.
Well, what it stated to the, on the ballot, was six point five million in salaries and benefits. That was on there, as was a million dollars for transportation, five hundred thousand for curriculum, a million four, or millions, something for athletics, and something for the SROs, I can't remember the number.
Safety.
Which is security and safety, so.
So, in this process of trying to say, are those things absolutely pulled, being pulled out? Since the levy do not have to support them?
That is the logical conclusion, however, I do think that, you know, we have to consider the fact that we put a thousand dollars for transportation on a levy, because transportation has grown exponentially. A million, thank you, a million. A thousand dollars for, for living large. It's been a long life, okay? So, that million dollars on that for transportation, I mean, that honestly caught me off guard, because it, I was like, how, how did we get here? This is crazy. Well, now we're digging deep into the meat of everything, discovering how we got there, and then now we have to ask the tough questions, is we obviously cannot sustain this, so what are our next steps, and what choices do we have to make? The reality is, unfortunately, athletics and extracurriculars cannot be funded by state dollars. Those have to come from a levy. So, to me, it's like if we're going to go ask for a supplemental levy, that needs to be out there, that, look, if, if you really don't wanna support this, we can't have athletics, or your kiddos are gonna have to pay a significant amount of dollars to play, which then tanks every program, and that's not good for the community. So, I mean, there's, there's things that we have to just put out there, because that's what it is. I don't wanna lose anything within our safety and security program, but there is some serious negotiation that needs to happen with the county if we continue with SROs, serious negotiations. So, there, I mean, there's all sorts of things that we have to be willing to look at across the board, and then the bonus, at least in my opinion, is this is what we asked for, but let's look deep into the budget, and where can we make adjustments so that maybe we can help flush out some of this? Okay, does that make sense? At least that's coming from my brain, but.
The focus is on the other end, and.
I'm, I, I'm not, yeah, I, I, I mean.
I think this is the, the other end, yes, but this is the last resort of that part, of that lot.
Right.
So, there, you know, everything else is done prior.
It's not, because everyone is panicked, and I get that, and sometimes when you are operating off of emotion, you don't hear everything that's really being said, until you're able to calm down and hear what's really being said, and that's just human nature, that's human nature. Um.
So, I had a twenty-four hour rule, crazy nerds.
Okay, so, um... This whole section down here, I don't think.
I think it's back to this one, and this is just for notes, kind of.
I think so, yeah.
I did, you guys, just so you know, link the form in, and I put a couple of samples of tiebreakers. Do not look at the format, it gets terrible.
Yeah, it's just a starting point for next time.
The format is a hot, so don't judge it right now.
I'm gonna judge it hard. Just wait, you're gonna be playing with it tonight, when you should be sleeping.
So, melatonin score.
So, you don't those worries just go right on?
Do you use melatonin?
I do.
If it helps.
Yes, not every night.
I usually binocular about once a week, in the middle of the night.
Just tell me a little bit more to you then.
Yeah.
I hope you're fresh in the morning, though, or you'll go.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
One of the issues that we have to the board is, is the one that says multiple areas of endorsement used in the last three years.
Their side effects. Their side effects.
Sure. You want me to play around with format, and what do I have to do for things that we won't change?
Highlight it.
Highlight it, okay. I will request access to.
So, are you, are you okay if we do that, kinda play around with those? If, if there's anything that's.
Yeah, just what we typically do is if there's something. I'm gonna open it up, so it's.
Well, that's good.
Just highlight it, so we know, and then we can put in language you want, but it's. Rebecca, did you hear me? If you highlight what the areas that you're not sure about, and if you wanna add language, split the red, put it dotted red, and then you can get those, and then go there.
If there's anything you don't like, or you wanna add, or something.
Nope, I will do that. As long as you promise not to look at it until I tell you I'm done.
Just make a copy and then send it.
I guess I could do that, just make a comment first. Well, I don't know if I can make a copy, it has to be me.
Oh. You can make a copy.
Okay, I will make a copy.
I didn't say, no, you, I don't have my voice, and I was just trying to talk so you could hear me.
I will make the copies, and then I will.
You don't have to make a copy.
I just made a copy, the copy has arrived.
Just save it in your own format, I don't know what. Because then you might split her format, I don't know.
She a teacher?
I don't know. Um, I just, okay. I'm still kind of perplexed by this whole, um... Okay. The, the HR, when letters are sent to potentially impacted employees, and then they have the right to appeal, so, because this is procedure, I mean, so, we've got a final reduction in force that we're coming back to the LEA saying, this is our final offer, and the forms, and this is where I guess, so the forms are coming for us should be reviewed prior to coming to us for that final offer. By the.
So, then you guys have a sense of what we're talking about?
Right, right.
And how many?
Right, so.
What's for shamata?
A bajillion years ago, we all sat in the library, filled up paperwork, and we all became highly qualified. How do we find out what areas that we were considering?
See, and that's what I, I don't know, do we use that? I think what should replace it is the advanced profession.
That was during, uh, no child.
What I'm saying is that, even on the ISB paperwork, and you have to put in paperwork, I noticed you, the highly qualified, keep popping up in the language, so can we replace that with possibly advancement, or does that work? Yeah. I will highlight this section. But I noticed that in every paper that I looked through, example ones, they all match. I need to clarify how you call it on the paperwork, I know that I was considering that at one point, but does that still stand up?
If, if that's where it grew, that's great.
Okay. Yes, that's below super.
So, then, I mean, I'm just saying, like, with.
Yeah, do you have a super, and then you're not, this isn't applied to it? If anybody with a certificate, it's teacher or a military.
Thank you so much for coming, appreciate it.
What is the official title, are they placing?